Oh, really?
They win. All right. All right, let me call this Subcommittee on Enrollment to order. We'll take up the following items for approval. Action item 1A is the approval of minutes of November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Let me move the approval of action item 1A. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Any discussion on the item? Any comments on the minutes? All right. We'll vote. All of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved. There being no further action items on the agenda, we'll now move to the information items. Information item 2A is the enrollment report by interim Vice Chancellor for Enrollment Management, Renee Sarmiento. She is joined today by Sarah.
Trulch.
Trulch, thank you. Assistant Dean for Policy Review from the Office of Applied Research Evaluation and Data Analytics. And they'll be giving us an enrollment update and discussing a few strategies to increase the enrollment pipeline.
Technical difficulties.
I hear you.
Got it.
No problem.
Two emails about it.
So today we're going to go over spring data. I'm going to give some updates on the CUNY Reconnect program, as well as giving you a preview of some of the enrollment initiatives with the New York City Public Schools system. So. Okay. So can everyone see that? No, it's kind of small. But as you'll see, that there are some hopeful things, trends in terms of enrollment. Although head count was down by 2%, there were an increase, a notable increase in the freshman class, a slight bump in transfer. And what I think is also promising that that full-time enrollment is also a little stronger than previous years. We're still behind when it comes to graduates. But if, as time permits, there's a whole slide that goes deeper into the enrollment numbers. Okay? But I do want to talk.
Can you hold up for one second?
Sure.
Just stay there for one second.
So the new graduate is really.
Oh.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
The, it's, it's actually something that's been noted nationally that the freshman trends are actually, freshman enrollment is going up. But they're not, and I tend to agree that this isn't a trend. This might be students who have graduated deferred because of COVID, who are now just starting to re-enroll. But nevertheless, I think that that's a very hopeful statistic.
Do you have retention numbers? Because that was an issue a year ago. But I don't know. It got corrected on my local campus, but I didn't check centrally.
Sarah, do we have? For.
I can look on the dashboard. I just thought maybe you knew offhand.
No. The, actually, the retention numbers, right now, I'm really kind of hard-pressed not to report on because we have some colleges that are 12-6, that are, that just started this semester. And we have about half a dozen schools who actually have enrollment in the middle of the semester. So that number will continue to grow, both in new and continuing.
Yep.
It's always late. You always get it late, but we want to give it to you late because we want to make sure we capture all the enrollments.
And the only, just as a larger comment, we always, and it is just a comment, not necessarily to be responded to, but we always wind up doing the, this is the national trend. I don't want to say I don't really care about the national trend, but I don't really care about the national trend. I do care about other institutions within New York. How do we look compared to them? Because I think that's a, for us, how do we look compared to SUNY? How do we look compared to them? That's a better barometer that, I don't care what happens in California. I care what happens in New York. And we're just, in mentioning, that's a better barometer for us to take a look at, that's all.
That's good feedback. And we could certainly do that. I do want to highlight though that even while the numbers were small in freshman classes, they were also record-breaking for some of the institutions. In fact, although these are senior and comprehensive colleges, the community colleges, which were most affected by COVID, saw 15% increase in their freshman enrollment. That's significant in a, in a population that were struggling for enrollment.
Correct.
So we'll get, we'll dive into the numbers a little bit more deeply, but I wanted to talk about CUNY Reconnect. So CUNY Reconnect was started by Speaker Adams. And what we did was we went back to 2017. There were about 100,000 students who started CUNY but never finished. Right? And that was our initial baseline. Well, on the dawning of some pretty intensive, and I know that you've seen it, advertisement, that denominator then got really pushed higher because we had students who enrolled at SUNY or enrolled in private and wanted to come back. Right? But nevertheless, our goal was 10,000 students for the Fall '23 academic year. And in that time, we did learn a lot about this particular population. What we learned was that for us, CUNY, for us, we were CUNY campus agnostic. What does that mean? According to the clearinghouse, 67% of the students who start and stop out re-enroll, not at the institution that they started in. Right? And so sometimes they wanted a fresh start. Sometimes they changed their major. And you'll see in some of the examples that when we started dealing with this population, it wasn't just getting them back into where they were because life happened.
Just getting them back.
Exactly, just getting them back. The other thing that we learned is that the most precious thing for them was time. Right? So they had family obligations. But a growing number of our underserved students, our black and brown students, had parents to take care of. And so the time for them was very valuable. And their, their time was reflected in how do we get back into college? How do, so there was a lot of coaching involved. Right? There was a lot of understanding, financial aid, and getting them through because they didn't have the time to sit and go through five different offices. It was, how do we do this all at once? And that's what the secrets are for the Reconnect, is really to try to connect them quickly. The other thing that we found in this population is sometimes they just needed the confidence. No one contacted them, right? And they needed the confidence to be able to say they could do it at this point in time. Right? So here are some of the strategies, and I'm not going to read through them, but all of them was to be able to move forward with students who had started but not finished their program. So in student tests, and this gives you an example. Here is a particular student who was just basically, I don't know what I'm doing. I get a call from a Reconnect person. And it's, and he says, I wasn't expecting the reassurance. And the person that I got was superkind. Sometimes that's all it takes. This particular student re-enrolled at BCC and is five classes away from graduating. That is exactly the type of student that we need to be able to reach out to. The second student, life got in the way. She lost her financial aid. She was a criminal justice major. And here's where we were CUNY agnostic, right? She started off as a criminal justice major. But because she had a child, her priorities changed. She's now working to be a dental hygienist because she wants to provide for her daughter and be a role model for her daughter. And this is where I think the, the, the way we need to approach our students is to be able to listen to what they need and then wrap around the services. So those are just two examples. And then, so, so fast forward.
And I assume that as we reach out to individuals, even if they don't re-enroll, we're basically asking them and survey, and doing surveys that basically show us why they dropped out.
Correct. Right? And sometimes it is, I can't do it now, but contact me in the fall. Right? And so having that information and reaching out. Most, most colleges, when they stop out, there's a lot of resources that are needed. And the central office is there to be able to help them out. So this is the, this is actually, to date, what we have enrolled. Right now, that's old. As of January 12th, 25th, we are now at 16-6. And we are working now on summer enrollment because a lot of the students want to take advantage of the summer enrollment. We have these funds till June 30th. And by August, we're going to use every dime to get as many students in to not just this spring, but also this fall. So I want to stop there because I'm going to go into the DOE initiatives. But are there any questions about Reconnect? Yes?
I should really know this already, but how do you reconnect? Do you make a telephone call? Do you, how are you reconnecting to these people to bring them back to CUNY?
So we're doing it all. So we have a robust marketing campaign that goes to a forum, that goes to navigators. We have the chat function. We have the email function. So it's, it's taking multiple communication strategies in order to get to this population.
Is anyone picking up the phone or making a call?
Absolutely.
To me, that's the, for me, that's the best.
I think Speaker Adams, at the one-stop, said, I'm so excited. One of my, one of my colleagues got a call from a Reconnect person, and she was just overjoyed. Right? So the, we can't underestimate the contact of a call, but sometimes that's all it takes.
To my mind, there's nothing that beats a call. I, you know, contact person directly, speak to that individual. That's, to me, that's outstanding.
Yes.
So the Reconnect, of course, is incredible for bringing students back to campus. I guess my question always is, once they're there, what preparation or professional development are we providing to advisors and counselors to work with this very special population? Because we know they had issues and concerns that sort of kept them out this long. And I believe that there should be some additional emphasis or attention to creating an advisement community that's aware of learners such as these. So is that part of this as well?
So at the beginning of this initiative, the most that we could do was to have borough-wide meetings of, and connect with the campuses and address most quickly the barriers, right, that are, get them to enroll. I think the long-term strategy is to be able to look at the support systems for these populations. There's some colleges, KCC being one of them, where they focus on adults. And their programs are robust, their services are robust. And it's not that way at other campuses. But the borough meetings allow us to identify barriers and start moving through those before we start to really look at the types of services and connections. That's the first step. The, the second step is the retention piece. I agree with that. Yes?
I have an image of a lot of these being part-time students. And my question is, has the new part-time TAP been effective as a marketing tool to this student population?
The part-time TAP, the credit for prior learning, the online degree programs, all of that, we have leveraged as ways in which for students to come back. So it's a multi-pronged strategy. And while, while I'm working to open up the funnels, the types of things, the types of modalities and services all fall under NBC Hensel's bigger strategy. And a lot of them have to do with academic affairs. We'll, we'll talk a little bit. Hopefully, we'll have some time. I'd like to be able to show this committee the online website, which I think is going to be a game changer when students want to look at, for programs and they can't actually attend. Okay. So let me talk a little bit about the latest strategy called Fab Five. And I know that there's a sports terminology in this. But I, it just can't, it just happened that it was called Fab Five. Right? So this is not a new concept in terms of the CUNY welcome letter. Other states have done it. And the, what the objective for this CUNY welcome letter is to be able to accept every student in the New York City School District. Right? And all the students, accept them all to a community college and all the senior colleges they're eligible for. We plan to do this September 1st, which is the first day that the application is open. And the first day, September 8th is, I think, when they begin classes. The hopes is for students to be able to act quickly. This welcome letter will have attached to it, and hopefully, an application fee waiver. We made the pitch to the mayor to be able to cover those fees. Right? The other thing that it will link to is the Fast App. I think the last time I checked, there were 15 tabs for the application. And in some colleges, it took up to 40 minutes to do. Imagine a community college student, or much less a NESSUP student, trying to complete this application when 90% of the information is what we already know and what we get from the DOE. So this Fast App focuses mostly on what major, getting it right, what campus. Right? They still have all the choices, but we get to be able to prompt them to act quicker. And so the colleges then can reach out. This is not anything that the colleges are used to because usually they start giving acceptance letters in January. And we're notoriously late. Right? Here, we're, we're turning it on its head and we're, we're first out the gate. Right? The other thing about the Fab Five is the Counselor Corner. Right now, the counselors get a flat PDF file of how their students, how they're doing in the application process. We want to provide them real-time data about the status of each application. So they don't have to ask. And they become partners with us in trying to get the student ready for the registration process. And then I think the last thing that I kind of referenced last time was the financial aid estimate. Once they know they've been accepted, once they know the barrier is gone, once they know that the counselor is supporting them in their decision with CUNY, is how do we get to the parents and the students to make sure that they know how affordable it is? You've seen the campaign on the subways. But what if you were to see an award letter that says your tuition is free, that your books and supplies are covered? Right? And so what we want to be able to do is start that process and build a financial literacy program all around it. Right? So it's not just taking, because in the event they have to take out loans, we want to make sure that they know about the responsibility. So that is, it's a draft because we're working very closely with the DOE. And there are a lot of moving pieces to that. And I, and I think, is there a slide? Without the CIS team, we would not be able to do any of that. And I know stuff for most of us not in the room and hectorism, but without their help, a lot, there's a lot going on with this.
Can I just add real quickly, Renee? One of the advances that we've made is we are creating an Office of Academic Technology that sits in the intersection of CIS and OAA. Because what we found is that, that it's in two different completely areas rather than having collaborative conversations. So our hope is that we can significantly speed up the process of this type of innovation by working deliberately together with an intersecting office.
So you might also want to ask how this is all getting paid. And that is part of all of, part of the $40 million. So we're putting it to good use. Among a myriad of other things is this pipeline. In developing this, and this is why it's in draft format, there are a lot of stakeholders that I need to check with and get feedback from. So I've already presented to the Council Presidents, the Provost Council, the Enrollment Council, the individuals that do the work that are part of Reconnect, and most importantly, the prospective students and the current students. We have a full data analysis from ORIDA to be able to tease out the data of how many we reached, how many started, what their retention is, how many credits are they taking, and learning from what students are telling us and what the campus is also telling us.
There've got to be some estimates as how many students we get from CUNY, I mean, from New York City Public Schools on a regular basis, on an annual basis. And given the additional focus, how much extra, how many? And that's sure, given the fact that they've run into enrollment decline also in the public school system. What's the thought on how many either extra students or are these maintaining the same flow of students? I mean, that's kind of, what are projections or at least hopes?
So we get about 80% of the, of the DOE students enrolling at the college. Right? And.
80% of DOE grads.
DOE grads, we get.
Come to CUNY.
Come to CUNY.
Okay.
And it's 80% of our freshmen are DOE grads.
Okay.
But of the CUNY graduates who go to college, 60% enroll at CUNY.
60%.
Yeah.
So what, what we want.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
60% of students who graduate from the New York City Public Schools and go to college, go to college at CUNY.
What was the 80%?
What was the 80% number?
80% is of CUNY's freshmen. 80% are graduates of the DOE.
Okay.
Right.
So one is starting with the base of.
But basically, 60%.
It's 60, 60%.
60, yeah.
How has that number changed over the last five years?
Yes.
Very little. It's an extremely stable number.
In fact, to answer Chairman Thompson's question, we were looking at this as a metric for the strategic plan for obvious reasons, since we're moving in this space. And one of the concerns is it moves so little from year to year. We're afraid it won't actually capture significantly, given that we're going to the online market and more of a national market. So it'll be interesting to see what happens. We're trying to figure out what the right metric is in this space to really measure the increase, given the decline in the, the number of graduates in New York City.
In DOE, yeah.
For me, I think that whatever the outcome is, if we can get students to apply, admit, and commit earlier, they become a better student. We all know that there's a learning loss. And if we get to them earlier, we have an opportunity to work with them during the summer. And I think that that's really important. So what I didn't announce in here is although this is in support of Fall '23, we do have an initiative pilot right now where we are waiving application fees from March 1st to April 15th. Right? There are about 20,000 scheduled to graduate seniors that have not yet applied to CUNY. Some of them won't. Right? But the others that do, we want them to apply now as opposed to July and August.
What was this, I remember reading, I just don't remember the numbers. What was the SUNY boost that they saw? I mean, because I remember correctly, they, they did this also at one point.
I don't remember what it says, do you?
Would love to see that.
I do, I can look it up. You know, SUNY did it just a two-week period in the fall. And they did comparisons for just that two-week period. My understanding is they did not expect that to be anything like an actual year-over-year increase.
The intel from the inside is that it did not actually make a difference. It just compressed the application.
Into that two-week period.
Yeah. And we'll see in the fall. That will be the proof in the pudding. But that it had less of an impact in increasing than it did.
Condensed.
In directing. Yep.
Do you, do you have any metric, any measurement of how many students apply from the parochial high schools in the five boroughs? Because there's quite a few students in, in that area.
Parochial students, the private school students, all of us, yes.
Those, I mean.
I don't. But part of that is because the parochial, the Catholic schools that I'm dealing with now all have separate databases, all have separate numbers. I, I asked them, if you could give me that data. And they're like, you have to go to every one of the schools. And so I'm going to every one of those schools.
Yeah, there are two different.
I'm going to every one of those schools.
There's two different dioceses, you know. There's the New York Diocese, which has its high schools. And then there's Brooklyn, Queens. New York has Manhattan, the Bronx, part of Westchester and Staten Island.
So I'm dealing with Sean Sullivan now with Staten Island, Manhattan, and the Bronx.
I connected the chancellor with the, with the superintendent of schools in New York and the New York Diocese. He had a good conversation with them. I don't know if you're familiar.
Yeah, I'm following up with it. The, the, the challenge is, is they're all separate.
Yeah, I understand that. Especially, I'm sorry, interrupt you.
I do think though, that in my initial conversations, when they heard of what we were doing with the DOE, they were very interested. And they are suffering enrollment losses.
And they closed 20 elementary schools.
That's right. And so, and their students need other options to pursue higher education. So.
I'm meeting the bigger of education on Wednesday. And I know, for Brooklyn and Queens, where I think that, that's a more fertile area in terms of getting potential students to come to CUNY. So let's hope. I mean, opportunity should be for everyone.
Yes.
You know, wherever they are and whatever they do.
Well, there are also Yeshiva schools and there are private schools. And those are really untapped, but we have the energy to kind of look at each one of them and build relationships.
That would be great. Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, so the, is there a change in the percentage of DOE graduates going to college? Not coming to CUNY, I heard that was the same. But are fewer as a percentage going to college?
So it's a very complicated number. The, we get these numbers from the New York City Department of Education, and their reporting lags. So the last data that we have is for the graduates of 2020. So we don't yet know about 21 or 2022. Yes. So I'm still waiting for the, they, they never report more than a year and a half out. So I'm still waiting for the 2021. And I'm not even, I'm not even supposed to ask for them for 2022 until next year. So the last we knew it was 2020. 2020, you might remember, was actually a record year for graduates, probably because of the relaxation in graduation standards. So on the peak of a very high number of New York City graduates from high school, the percentage who enrolled in college anyway was a little bit lower. As an overall number, so just comparing college-going, not accounting for the fact that the number of graduates grew, it actually looked really, really stable. But there's a couple of things about that that don't perfectly match up with our population. They just track people who are on-time high school graduates going directly into college. So that population stayed very stable. CUNY's market share of that population stayed very stable. The places where we think we've really lost a lot of people are people who take longer to graduate from high school, the non-traditional graduates, and those who then have a gap between high school and college enrollment. And then as soon as we have those updated numbers, we're very happy to share them. But that's the lag we have.
Thank you.
It's 5:30.
I'm done?
I think you can finish up with that.
Just about, but Steve can finish.
Well, so I, so I did want to show the online website.
We can save that for next time, do a whole presentation.
I, here's what I want to be able to, okay. So this is the overall enrollment for spring. And you'll see, very small, that we're just a little below last year. The growth in that average is the community colleges at 1.7% and then the, the comprehensive is at 1.0. So we're seeing some really hopeful things happening. The other thing is, and I, and I talked a little bit about this, is we're holding. The other thing is, and I, and I talked a little bit about this, is we're holding steady on the FTE. And that is, is big. Now, I guess the, the last thing, the last two slides I want to show you is, you know, in my business, I like the blue. Orange is not, not, it's my favorite color, but not for the same sex. You're gonna see these blue headcounts, this is the increase of freshmen, right? Now, I want to be able to say that spring is not a big freshman class. It's been traditionally low. So this is what's accounting for this high, high mark. But if you look at some of these colleges, some of them have exceeded their five-year pre-COVID fall, uh, spring number. So I think that that is a hopeful sign. And it's also a testament of what's happening at these colleges. Some of them have full SEM plans, they're looking at their conversion, they're looking at their data. They're, they're really kind of capitalizing also on the marketing communication efforts that have been going on. And then here's the transfer. See, this is kind of an interesting trend too, in that the blue and the increases in transfer are in the comprehensive and community colleges, right? So again, all the colleges, I believe, are, are really working hard. But this is kind of an interesting trend in terms of freshmen. Will it continue? I think at my next meeting, Karen Thompson, I, I would like to be able to give you more data on New York
Absolutely.
and, and how we compare. So in the interest of time, there is a whole slew of slides. But I just wanted to be able to highlight some of the good work that, that we're trying to do in support of the colleges. And more importantly, all the work that's happening with the colleges now to produce this kind of number.
Good stuff. Thank you. Any other questions? Again, thanks a lot. Appreciate it. Um, that's it, I guess. Move to adjourn. There's nothing else on the agenda.
Thanks, meeting. I'll be here.
Yes, who, who do you want to sit up? Do you have to say?
Is it here or?
Motion to adjourn. Do I have to say?
Yes, it's here. You're here.
I've been further because I went to the other one thinking that I needed to get. And they all look at me.
What's next on this round?
Uh, education.